Your debut, so.
Evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the board of supervisors for Lower Makefield Township. First item of business will be an interview with Kevin Schreiber, who was asked to be a member of the Citizens Traffic Committee. Welcome.
Evening. Thank you.
And thank you for being even more involved with the community than you already are. I really don't have any questions other than say thanks for your service to the community. And I'm sure you'll be just as passionate on Citizens Traffic Commission and anything else you've done in the town. Thank you.
And I'll just pass it on to the guy sitting next to me.
Thank you so much. Hey, Kevin, how you doing? I don't think we've ever met before. Nice to meet you. So just quick glance at the resume. It looks like nursing, medical field background, citizens traffic. What would you bring for the committee as far as the knowledge of citizens and traffic?
Well, my experience, obviously, driving a car around town, vocal about problems in the community. As many of you are aware, I'm not shy about speaking up about things. A few years ago, on Makefield Road, life was lost and that brought some attention to some traffic concerns on Makefield Road. So I worked with some of the parents at Makefield Elementary School administrators and some township officials. And they did a traffic study and took some traffic calming measures. So so far, that's been my experience as far as actively working towards improving traffic conditions around the town.
Oh, good enough. Sure. It's a great, I mean, on the Makefield Road postmortem, what are your thoughts about the process and the outcome with that?
I mean, I hate that it costs a lot of money to come up with those. But I think we probably could have come up with those similar ideas without all the money that was spent on the study. But, you know, it was done and and some efforts were put in. And my kids don't go there anymore, so I don't know. I haven't talked to anybody at the school or the traffic, the crossing guard, excuse me, about, you know, if it's worked or not. That would be something great to know is, did it work? Has it helped in the opinion of the people who are out there every day? So and that and that goes for like a lot of the different areas around town where we make these improvements. But do we follow up to see if it's made life better for anybody or made anything safer?
One of the challenges in the Citizens Traffic Commission is observation bias, right? So when a car is coming by your house, it's going too fast, right? Although, most times it is going too fast. But collectively, if you're looking at cars and what their speeds are and stuff like that, when traffic studies are done, many times the concerns aren't validated by the science. And then it makes it sometimes very difficult because it's hard sometimes on on that one where you can't justify investments that the traffic engineering, the research doesn't bear out. And then it's often sort of that pendulum and, you know, that's where the challenge of the position is, which is, you know, how to be a good advocate also, not to say that the traffic engineers are flawless or anything like that, but be a good critic. May understand those sorts of things.
Yeah, when we were working on the Makefield Road issue, actually Scott Weiner, who's on the Citizens Traffic Committee, came out one morning with me and we had talked and, you know, about some of those concerns and, you know. So I had worked with him as well at the time.
Awesome.
But I appreciate that feedback and input on that.
Yeah, that's all I had for questions. I've known Kevin for what, 10 years?
At least.
Yeah.
Hey, Gavin. Yeah, I think actually, you know, what John John said like resonates with me because I got to be the liaison for a few years with Citizens Traffic. And one of the things that impresses me about the people who volunteer on that commission is is all the legwork they have to do. There's a there's a process, right, how something comes in and then how the commission evaluates it. And then the way they reach out for, you know, when they think they've, you know what, there is something here. We do need additional stop sign if we can get it. Is it a state road or a township road? And then bring in the experts through the liaison or through the police department. And I think it's actually one of the things that I think works really well in terms of people like you, right? And and to Fred's point and everyone else's point, you've done so much for the township. I mean, I think you helped start the recycling of the Christmas lights with the scouts when you were there. And I know that your kids have aged out of Cub and, you know, I know that you're moving on to other things. The people like you are what helps, you know, make our township a great thing. What I'm worried about is if we should have snowmageddon again and someone was to build like a crazy slide on their property that the people could whoosh out into traffic. I'm just kidding, Kevin. I I love that post and can't wait to bring back that in the holiday tree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you'll hear from us the next couple of days. Okay. Vote today and watch the meeting. Stay up, you know, fall asleep listening to the boredom. You'll know the results.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all the kind words, too.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome again to the board supervisor's meeting for January 18th. Meeting is now in session and let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. The roll call Supervisor Blundy.
Here.
Supervisor Grunier, not here. Supervisor McCartney.
Here.
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Or here, we have a quorum. Community announcements. I guess I'll do them today. Reminder that during this portion of the agenda, residents and youth organizations can call in now to make a special announcement or contact township admin at lnt.org to request a special announcement be added to the agenda. On February 8th at 6:00 PM, there'll be a meeting of Disability Advisory Board featuring a guest speaker, Claire Lille, who is director of the Bucks County Center for Independent Living. Residents can view the meeting live on YouTube by visiting Lower Makefield YouTube site. Lower Makefield will be hosting a blood drive for the Red Cross on Friday, March 10th, 2023 at 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM in the meeting room of the township at 1100 Edgewood Yardley Road. Is there any members of the board that have announcements to make?
If I could just, if I could just build up on that, right? We've been having a number of blood drives and it really helps, but but there is a critical shortage right now. Plots, blood, you name it. So even though we don't have anything immediately at the township, if residents are able to, the Red Cross is in dire need, at least that's the voicemail message that they left me earlier today. And I would urge you all, if you can, to take this opportunity to donate.
Thank you, Ms. Blundy. We'll go to item five, consider approval of minutes for December 21st, 2022. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Your second. Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any discussion? Any public comment on the minutes? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
The nose, five zero passes. Item six, consider approval of minutes for January 3rd, 2023 reorganization meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Okay.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any discussion, comments, public comment, hearing none. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
There's no five zero, no four zero, I'm sorry. Item seven, engineer's report.
Yes, hello supervisors. Before I get into the agenda items, I want to give you a brief update on the Maple Vale Drainage Improvements Phase One project. The contractor mobilized to the site, began installing the outfall structure and the inlets within Maple Vale, within Maple Vale Road. When they began constructing the pipe from Maple Vale down to the open field area that's owned by the township, they hit a Verizon duck bank. They didn't sever any wires, but they hit the duck bank. This was work that was not, Verizon didn't mark it out when they did their PA one call. And when we called Verizon back out, once the duck bank was hit to determine who's owned those facilities, Verizon still did not respond. And then, once they submitted an emergency action, it was determined that they are, it was Verizon's duck bank. And it could not be relocated. It was 10 conduits that that Verizon could not relocate. So we had to basically move the drainage pipe, redesign it to move the drainage pipe and a manhole. We submitted a revised design to PennDOT since Taylorsville Road is a PennDOT road. And we need a highway occupancy permit for the revision. And we are waiting on that highway occupancy permit from PennDOT before we can proceed. So that's the status of the project and these first two changers are in association with that. The first change order is a result of the storm pipe that was originally designed has now been changed. The, we originally had reinforced concrete pipe. Due to supply chain issues or availability, contractor indicated that that was not a pipe that was available until the middle of 2023. So we decided to adjust the the type of pipe, the material of the pipe that was installed. And that was cheaper than the reinforced concrete pipe. And therefore, this first change order is a credit to the township in the amount of $6,838.62. So we would recommend that change order.
Andy, before we go there, I'm sorry, James. The first thing you told us about the platypus bill, the duck bill or whatever, could you explain to people what you're talking about a little bit? Like without getting too deep, we hit a what?
This was a, so it was 10 plastic conduits that carries Verizon wires through them and distributes them to various portions throughout the township.
And Verizon had told us about it. We didn't know it was there when we designed things, you know, not being able to take that into account. Is there an opportunity for Verizon to help us with the fix?
There, there is, and we can, we can, we intend to pursue that with Verizon.
Thank you. Sorry, James.
No worries. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for consider change in order number one for the Maple Hill Drainage Improvement Phase One as a credit to the township in the amount of $6,838.62.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Blundy. Any discussion?
You have, Andy?
Yes.
So the new pipe that we're getting, does it have a shorter lifespan than the previous one? Is there any anticipated ongoing sort of expenses we should expect for maintenance that we wouldn't have with the other one?
No, this is, this is a high density polyethylene pipe. It is a standard stormwater pipe when installed in grass areas. And this is certainly a grass area that where this pipe will be installed. So now they have a lifespan that is. The only reason that you would use reinforced concrete pipe would be for under a roadway or or if you have shallow cover under a roadway. This is not the case, so.
But why did you select the the concrete reinforced originally?
Originally, it was because it's a, it's a flat area. And so we were concerned about running the pipe and having to drop the, the, it's a flat area. And so the reinforced concrete pipe that we originally specified was an elliptical pipe. And so it meaning that it had more width than it had depth. And then that was, you know, required by the the capacity of the the stormwater that we were intending to carry through there. After doing a little bit more investigating, we were able to make the a 36 inch round pipe for HDPE, carry the same capacity of flow through it as the reinforced concrete pipe. And we determined that it was able to work and and still positively drain from the roadway. So, yeah.
Question, comments on the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of change order number one signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
The next item would be to consider change order number two for the Maple Vale Drainage Improvements Phase One project in the amount of $7,582.4. That would be for an additional manhole that is required. Originally, we had a a large seven foot wide manhole because the location of the duck bank, we could not fit that manhole in between an existing gas line and the Verizon duct bank. And so we had to order a a smaller width manhole. The contractor has ordered that and that's the, that's the reason for this change order in the amount of $7,582.4.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blundy, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any comments, discussion? So so the the smaller diameter, since it's not a, is not, I guess, a standard size, it's, it costs more?
Well, because it, it, we can't, they had already delivered the the seven foot wide manhole to the site. So we can't return that. That is, was the custom manhole. So we basically have to buy a new manhole and that's what the price of this is.
We'll deal with that with.
Yes.
What are we doing with the old manhole?
We, I've contacted, I would say, five different construction companies who were working within the area to see if they wanted to pick it up. And, you know, and basically, you know, get a free manhole or get a reduced priced manhole. But because it's a custom size, nobody had a need for the manhole. So we're basically grinding it up and disposing it.
Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, change order number two, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero.
The next item would be consider pay application number one for the Maple Vale Drainage Improvements Project to Ben Cardino. to Ben Cardino Excavating Inc. in the amount of $65,036.54. This reflects the amount of work that was completed on site. And there is approximately $45,000 remaining in the, correction, there's approximately $90,000 remaining in, in the contract value. So. So we're recommending approval of payment number one in the amount of $65,036.54.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Blundy. And the $90,000 or so is what's left for the whole project?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of pay application number one signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Those know, four zero, eyes have it.
The next item is to consider the pay application number two, which would be the final pay application for the 2022 Bike Path Maintenance Project, the general asphalt paving in the amount of $2,131.80. This work was completed last year. If you'll remember, in the last meeting, we had paid basically the full amount minus a, a 2% retainage, which we were holding until we received a maintenance bond. We've received that maintenance bond. It's a two-year maintenance bond. And from the date of completion, and therefore, we recommend issuing final payment on this project in the amount of $2,131.80.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear your second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Lewis for pay application number two. Any discussion? Everything looks good to you? Satisfactory?
Yes.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of pay application number two signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those know, eyes have it, four zero.
Next item is to consider escrow release number six for the Prickett Preserve Development to ELU DeLuca Yardley LLC in the amount of $467,260 even. This is work for the stormwater management, infrastructure that has been installed, and also roadway and paving improvements that have been completed. We've inspected the work. We've agreed on the quantities that were submitted, and therefore, we're recommending escrow release. There is approximately $3.4 million remaining in escrow on this development.
Hear a motion?
So, so moved.
Hear your second?
Second?
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Blundy. Any discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of escrow release number six signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Those know, passes three to one.
Next item is to consider authorization for advertisement of the 2023 Road Program Project. I believe we have an exhibit, which is a map of the township. I apologize for the visibility of it. But if you'll see in the upper left-hand corner, that's the Yardley Run neighborhood. A significant amount of the 2023 Road Program is the Millan Overlay of the Yardley Run development, which includes East Wellington Drive, West Wellington Drive, Fountain Drive, North Bradford Road, and Wingate Drive. In addition to that, within the base bid would be Central Drive, Heather Circle, Ramsey Road between Kings and Rolloffs, and Rolloffs Road between Ramsey and Derbyshire Road. And then additional line striping and reflective pavement markings along Rolloffs Road as well. So that would be the base bid. Our add alternate would be to Millan Overlay Colony Way and Patriot Drive, which are shown in yellow on the, on the map. And then an add alternate number two would be to perform stormwater inlet repairs for all the roads that we have tentative in the 2024 Road Program. So we're asking for your authorization to advertise. The, the intended schedule would be to complete and, and put the bid up for electronic bidding process on Penn Bid within the coming weeks. And a bid opening at the end of February with a possible award at the beginning of March, with the intention of having all work completed by the start of the school year, which would be first of September.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertisement of the 2023 Road Program Budget Project.
Second?
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney, unauthorization to advertise 2023 Road Program Project. Any discussion?
Andy, the section on Rolloffs Road that you are going to have reflective, that's the section right behind Pennwood?
Yes, that's the right adjacent to the, the school there. Yes.
Along that back parking lot there?
Exactly.
So that's the stretch. Can you bring that map back up? It's that stretch there, the entire stretch there where the school is essentially is, is where you were going to put the reflective paint? Is that what those dotted?
Yes, that, that's the dashed line.
Okay.
Uh, shown on the map there. Uh, so currently there's yellow line striping from Makefield Road back to where that dashed line starts. And then we're extending it out to Ramsey Road.
Does that cover the entire school zone between signs along Rolloffs Road there? Is that the, is that the purpose of that? Are there two, are there signs there that say school zone?
Uh, there are signs on school that indicate school zone, but I believe the, the, the school extends to Denny Drive. So this is to extend the line. This was in conjunction with the Traffic Safety Office. This is based on their recommendation. And we're, it was extended to Ramsey Road.
So it doesn't cover the entire school zone along Rolloffs there? Would it make sense to?
Uh, we can investigate it. But we based it on the, the width of the, of the, of the roadway and the parking. But I'll, I'll take another look at it before we put it out for bid.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so this represents the plan that we previously agreed to was like three-year plan for roads.
Correct.
So the roads are on there. Question for you, given where we're at and the budget and the bid alternates, is it worth adding additional bid alternates? Or is it your thought that we're probably?
It's my thought that we're probably right there at the budget number with, with, with the base bid. And if we get numbers, if we get pavement, paving numbers similar to what we got last year, then it's possible that we would, we would have enough in the budget to award some of the alternates.
So, okay. So that there's not really pricing-wise an opportunity to add more alternates?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Any other discussion with the supervisors? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of, authorizing the program project. Signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Proved by a four zero. Next?
Next item is to consider authorization for advertisement of the 2023 Pool Painting Project, and we have an exhibit for that. So in, in reviewing the conditions of the existing pools with the Parks and Rec Department, the, the scope of work was determined to be to, for the tot pool to acid wash and touch up paint. For the intermediate pool, acid wash and touch up paint. For the lap pool to repair some joints, recock some joints right underneath the, the existing drain gutter. And then acid wash and touch up the paint. And then the Olympic pool is to sandblast the entire Olympic pool, repair the, the joints there and, and paint the Olympic pool. So the focus this year, the intention is that really, you know, periodically, all of the pools are going to need to be sandblasted and, and repainted. So this would be part of like a four-year cycle or possibly a three-year cycle where we're sandblasting the pools and, and repainting them so that the paint can stick and, and last a little longer.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Make the second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any comment, discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the 2023 Pool Painting Project signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those know, proved four zero.
Thank you. Next item is to consider authorization to apply for a Greenlight Go grant for the Taylorsville Road Signal Upgrade. This is the signal at the intersection of Woodside Road and Taylorsville Road. If you'll remember, as part of the Woodside Road Bike Path, the path is to be constructed and to terminate at Taylorsville Road. But the, when we had bid the project out, there was an add alternate to make the improvements to the intersection, and that came in very high. And so as a result of that, we've basically taken the cost estimate of the, the bids that we received and are now attempting to pay for that work through a Greenlight Go grant that is available. The application deadline is January 31st, and therefore, it, it carries a 20% match. And thus, the township portion of that match would be $23,439. As part of the application, we would need to, we don't need a resolution, but we do need a, a letter signed by the township indicating that they're willing to, it's basically a funding commitment letter that they're willing to fund the match. And so that's what we're asking for authorization here.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the township manager to, right on our behalf, to apply for the Greenlight Go grant for the Taylorsville Road Signal Update.
Have a second?
Second?
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to apply for the Greenlight Go Grant for Taylorsville Road Signal Upgrade. Any discussion? And Andy, this is for the, an extension of the bike path?
It is. It, it would be intersection improvement. So ADA ramps, signal upgrades from, at, at the entire intersection that would carry the bike path from Taylor, from the north, northwest corner of Taylorsville Road to the southeast corner of Taylorsville Road and tie into the existing path that was constructed by the Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge Commission.
We have a concept design already?
We have a concept design. And so, yeah, that, it would be shovel-ready to the point where we think that makes a, a strong application for, for the grant.
Any other comments or any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorization to apply for the grant signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those know?
I'm going to continue to accuse myself on this issue.
I understand. Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. And then the last is just a project update on the Woodside Road Bike Path in, in, in discussion with the contractor. They are intending to begin ordering the materials for the drainage improvements portion of the work. And they, they want to get started in the mid-February with breaking ground out there. And so we're still waiting on a final schedule for the entire project for them. Once we get that, we'll be able to distribute that to residents and through the township's social media and make sure that everybody's fully aware of the, the, the work of the project and the scope and the schedule of when they intend to break ground.
Fantastic. I'm looking forward to it.
Same here.
Good. Item eight, slisters report.
Mr. Chair? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The executive session report is as follows. The executive session started at 6:45 tonight, concluded around 7:20 to 7:25. Those of the supervisors present at this meeting were present to the executive session along with Mr. Kratz or myself. And for a portion of the executive session, Chief Kalusi, personnel items, litigation items, informational items, the real estate items were discussed at the executive session. The first three items under my section of the agenda are all interrelated. They'll require separate votes, but I'm going to at least give a kind of a background for this for everybody's benefit. In March of last year, of course, people may recall the township sold the sanitary sewer system to Aqua, Pennsylvania. As part of the sale, the township is required to convey all property interest, including but not limited to easements, title and other interests to any and all parts of the sewer system to Aqua. Many easements were never formally obtained or recorded, so our office on behalf of the township acquired most of the necessary easements for the sale. I think that the number was 80 to 90 that we were able to cob. I would say we give all the credit to Barbara Kirk for doing that work. Three property owners, however, have refused to convey the easement to the township, and the sale is almost one-year-old. In order to finalize the transfer of the easement to Aqua and to get reimbursement of certain money being held in escrow, the township has no other option but to formally condemn the easements and assign easement to Aqua. In order to proceed with the condemnation, our office obtained appraisals for the current fair market value of the easements, copies of which were attached to our, some of the information we had, I think, was in the FTP. Once the board approves the resolutions to condemn, the necessary pleadings to the Bucks County Court of Common pleas will be filed, and then issues letters, issue letters of payment, et cetera, where the amounts, and the, the amounts are 12,9300 and 3,400 respectively. At least according to the appraisals that we have. I don't know, recall how much we have in escrow remaining, but I think it's not too far off the aggregate of those three items. So anyway, that's the background. If anybody has any questions, but I would ask for the board separately to approve the resolutions as indicated 23-1, authorizing condemnation of an easement across certain real property located at 27 Morningside Drive. Second, consider approval of resolution 23-2, authorizing condemnation of an easement across certain real property located at 236 Oxford Valley Road. And third, and item C, consider approval of resolution 23-3, authorizing condemnation of an easement across certain real property located at 447 Heacock Road. And the amounts I actually are, the first one is 9,300, the second was 3,400, and the third one was 12,000. And as an aside, there were numerous attempts by our office to contact these folks, letters sent. So it's not as if the attempts were made, they were repeated. I can, you know, if we had to produce those, we certainly could. So we would ask for those motions to be made if, if you're so inclined.
Anyone make a motion for resolution 23-1?
So moved.
Hear your second?
I'll second.
Have a motion made by Supervisor Blundy, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any further discussion on the motion?
Dave, could you just spend a second? I know that each property is going to be a little bit different, but describing what an easement means in this context?
Yeah, the easement means, actually, literally the location of the pipes underneath the property that trans, transversa property, however the angle is or what, what of the maps would show, to allow access basically for those in the event that something would be required to perform maintenance or something like that. It's, everybody in the township who has a sewer, has, at some, someplace has a sewer easement. And so this is not something that's unique to these properties.
Thank you.
And Dave, can you explain what the condemnation of the easement process is now that?
Yeah, it's, it would be to file condemnation process in court, actually include the appraisal so that they, they know how much we're seeking to, to, to pay. And then the, if, if the property owners wanted to oppose it, they would file what are called preliminary objections. Given the amounts in question, my, my guess would be they probably would have not. But, and then once they're condemned, then we can begin in the process of actually, once we own the easements, we then would transfer that automatically to Aqua, which is part of the requirement.
You said the cost for each one is about 3,000, 4,000, about 12,000?
Well, the actual values are those. Once 12,000, once 9,300, once 3,400, the actual process filing would be a few hundred dollars. I mean, but it's not, once, once the, the items are filed, there's very little to do after that, assuming there's no preliminary objections that are filed. So.
And this is part of the contract that we had with Aqua?
Exactly. Yes. Yep. This is, we're just basically cleaning up the final, you know, areas that we have either title or easement access to that we want to then convey to Aqua per the agreement.
Okay.
And then one more question. If, if we hadn't, you know, sold, which obviously we had, but if we hadn't, in part of the cleanup, meaning we are continuing to make sure that all property that we believe is ours is ours, all property that we're responsible for is ours, this, this is something we would have taken care of in due course anyway. Because since the pipes are there under the ground, we have to, whoever's maintaining the sewers have to, has to be able to maintain access for repair, et cetera.
Yes. And as everybody recalls, at one point, the township owned all the pipes. And that was one of the issues that, you know, miles and miles of the pipes. And as was reported, the, the system had not been maintained, at least to some level, to satisfy for some people according to the DEP and the 537 Plan. So that would be something at some point, we would have to, I'm sure, at, at a minimum videotape and then. at a, at a minimum videotape and then, or video, I'm sorry, video in terms of the condition of the pipes on the ground and then whatever maintenance is required after that. So this is, yeah, this is just part of that. It's a pretty mundane concept, but it's one that's necessary under the circumstances. Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? Any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment on the line for us here. Ethan's joining us now. Ethan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Oh, Ethan, you just give your full name and tell us if you're a Lower Mayfield resident.
Hello, I'm Ethan Roskin, and I am Boy Scout, and I wanted to learn more about my community. I have a question regarding 8A. If that's okay.
Sure.
So we, I'm friends with people who live on the Morningside Drive area, and we've gone boating in the area behind the houses before, and we're just curious if, if, when the area is condemned, will, will we still be able to do the boating and stuff like that there? Or were we not able to be?
Well, let's put it this way, Ethan, the condemnation process will not impact that. I can't say if anything else would. Condemnation just means that the ownership passes to the entity, in this case, the township, that would need it for access, and then it would be passed to Aqua, which is the company that now owns the system. As far as any waterways behind her, this, this doesn't change the, the condition on the ground at all. So, all right.
Okay, thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
Thank you for the question.
Question.
Thanks for calling in, Ethan.
Any other public comment?
No more public comment.
Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
Have a motion for the first one then?
Just for the first.
It was the first one.
We're doing all.
Oh, yeah, I want to take them individually, even though it's a little bit tedious, but I think we need to.
For 23-1.
Okay.
All those opposed, say no. Raise your hand. Eyes have it, four zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 23-2, authoring condemnation of an easement across certain real property located 236 Oxford Valley Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of resolution 23-2 signify by saying hi, raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it, four zero. Entertainer motion for 23-3.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 23-3, authorizing condemnation of an easement across certain real property located at 447 Heacock Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, sign of resolution 23-2 signify by saying hi, raise your hand.
Hi.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it, 23, four zero.
Thank, thank you.
And one, one more, 23-3?
I think you just.
That was it.
That was it?
Yep.
Got all three of them?
Yeah.
All right.
So continuing on to my stimulating report here. The next resolution is 23-4, update to 2021 Anhot Committee Resolution. You may recall that in May of 2021, the Anhot Committee was created per resolution. And at, at that time, the, the expectation was a final report would be issued to the board of their work on March 31st, 2022. Obviously, we've well passed that, but I think for a good reason that there's been a lot of work done, including the retention of Avison and Young to perform some consulting work with, with the Anhot Committee. And we actually just added a member, I think, at the last meeting as well, Mr. Schmidt. So it appears necessary to coordinate the Anhot Committee's charge and its tenure with that of Avison Young's work, and then give a little more leeway after that. Avison and Young indicates that its work will probably extend to at least June of this, this year. Our recommendation is then to extend the resolution, which is then the number 2448, to extend the time for the Anhot Committee's work to no later than September 30, 2023. That's, that's the nature of the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 23-4, update the 2021 Anhot Committee Resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to approve resolution 23-4. Any comments, discussion?
Yeah, Dave, I don't know how nitpicky we have to get. The Anhot Committee did give a report within the timeframe that you outlined, where they really, you know, summed up where they were and
Right.
what next steps might be. And they came before the whole board. And it was, it was actually very, very really, really great presentation. So I do appreciate, like, I'm the liaison this year, and I'm getting up to speed, and those people are doing tremendous work on behalf of the township. And obviously, the board has been kept up to date, and we've made some motions to approve certain next steps. So I just want to make sure that the, the language of this additional extension of time doesn't negate the things that we've done in the past. It really recognizes the hard work that's continuing, that's been ongoing, and the deliverables that have been accomplished to date.
I'd be happy to revise it so that it can be signed at the next meeting. I can do that. That's not a problem. If you'd like me to include that language, I have no problem with amending it to do that. I don't know if I want to do it on the fly tonight because I don't want to miss something if that's, I, I did.
I think.
I did talk about the major undertakings, you know.
Dave, he raised a really good point, and I would ask the maker of the motion if he would be so kind as to table this until we can make sure that we're, you know, have our language as precise as it needs to be. I don't, I do tend to overthink things, so I, I'm sorry if I'm making a mountain out of the mole, but I just want to make sure we're capturing things correctly.
Yeah, you are.
I would be comfortable with postponing.
Well, or we could table it or, or, I know Mr. Rubin's not here, and I'm trying to, even though we don't formally follow.
There was a motion made and seconded, but there was.
Yeah, I think here's what I would, you defer.
Are you, she's not making, Supervisor Blondie's not making a motion to table. She's asking if Supervisor Lewis would change his motion to table.
I'm asking whatever gets it done.
Well, what, you, you want, you, you don't want it done tonight. You want to add the language so it could be done. Here's what I recommend, that we have a motion to defer the, this motion to the next meeting so that we can include the, the language in the resolution. And then that way, we have a date certain, because tabling, there's no date certain. We would defer it.
So I move to amend my motion to say, I move that postpone this item.
February 1st, I think. Yeah. Yep.
I'll, I'll second my second.
Okay.
Right, so we will, we will postpone the motion until February.
Yeah.
We have to postpone.
Correct. Thank you.
Any discussion on the postponement? Any public comment on the postponement? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to postpone signify by saying hi, raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, no? Postponement is passed.
Next, under item E, is to consider approval of resolution 23-5 regarding approval of township efforts and actions to be taken for PUC approval of exemptions, deductions, or credits to residents with secondary water meters. Brief way of background. This part of the transfer of the assets of the sewer system to Aqua, one of the things, of course, was to, to the meter reading and to measure the flows. One of the challenges is we have several folks with, primarily with pools that have secondary meters that actually don't contribute to the, the sanitary sewer system. Unfortunately, what's happened is those meters have been read and those discharges have been charged back to the owners that do not relate to the sanitary sewer system. Aqua has filed a request to have that adjusted. That has been suspended at this point until, I believe, June. The point of this resolution is to then enable our office to take whatever actions are necessary, either through the legislative process, to the new governor's office, and through the PUC process, wherever that's available, for us to engage any and all means to do that. So that's really the purpose of the resolution.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor McCartney, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to approve resolution 23-5. Any discussion?
Just one short item. There is of the 558 customers. One of them's a very important one. And it's the pool at Lower Mayfield.
That's true. You mentioned that before, and I appreciate that. That is.
So not only are we advocating for the residents, we're also advocating for the township of Lower Mayfield in that as well.
Thank you.
With that.
That's a small pool.
It's a, yeah.
It's going to use a lot of water.
Yeah.
It is going to get painted.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it, four zero.
Thank you. The final item under my scintillating report here, actually, it is an important one, the extension of consulting agreement for Mr. Hucklebridge. Mr. Hucklebridge is the former Director of Public Works here, who was retained on a consultant agreement to assist our office in the litigation with the Marshall Municipal Authority in terms of the reconciliation of operating and maintenance expenses, which goes back several years. Mr. Hucklebridge has been extremely helpful in his work in helping us review the information that's been supplied. The problem has been the, the information has been slow to be, been received during the litigation. Litigation continues. Mr. Hucklebridge's former agreement expired December of last year, the 31st. It's our recommendation that his agreement be extended if necessary up to the end of this year. I don't know that it will be necessary for that. At the same rate, $75 per hour, except in the circumstances where he may have to testify in a deposition, given his PE status, professional engineer status, at a rate of $150 now. So that'd be our recommendation. In all other respects, the agreement would be the same.
I entertain a motion to extend his agreement.
So moved.
I'll have Supervisor Blondie with the motions, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any discussion?
Dave, do you have an estimate of how much time's going to be spent by?
It's hard to say that. What I will do, though, because we, that's a good question. We'll try to find out what the scope of remaining discovery is that he would have to look at and then try to plot out what that would look like. I, you know, it'd be unfair to Mr. Hucklebridge and to you right now to give any kind of estimate, because I just don't know.
Okay.
What I could do is I could check with the, my colleagues who are actually litigating the case, and I'll find out from what they go and project. And I can find it from Greg, too, like I talked to him about.
Just to project.
Sure, sure. I can look at that. Yep.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the extension signify by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
No? Eyes have it, four zero.
Thank you. And that's the extent of my report.
Okay, we'll go to Community Development, item nine. Jim, are you there or?
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Majewski is on, on the line. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Can't hear you, Jim.
Can't hear me at all?
Now we can.
You're fine now.
Okay. We have in front of the board, Consider Pay Application Number Six for the Lower Mayfield Community Trail Project to Richard E. Pearson Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $13,759.11.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve pay application number six for the Lower Mayfield Community Trail Project to Richard E. Pearson Construction Company in the amount of $13,759.11.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. Pay application six for the Community Trail Project. Well, any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it, four zero.
Under 9D, I'd like to just give an update on that project. The contractor, due to favorable weather, has been able to complete most of the work. They will be finished, I believe, by next Wednesday. So the traffic signal at Rolloffs Road in Oxford Valley went in yesterday, and they've been doing the glass tie-in pavement work for the ADA ramps and putting down the stripings since we've had favorable weather.
Item C?
Are we on B?
Oh.
That was the update.
That was B.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Item C, we have a certificate of appropriateness for 706 Stony Hill Road. That is for Citizens Bank. It's currently the Investors Bank at the intersection of Stony Hill Road and Langhorn Yardly Road. They're changing their color scheme to match their company colors. The Historical Architectural Review Board unanimously, unanimously voted to approve that certificate of appropriateness, or recommend approval. The only issue they have is with the awnings and the color of the green. The applicant has since revised the plan to go with the bronze color that's similar to the roofing that had been proposed in the application as part of their permit for the work.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 706 Stony Hill Road, Citizens Bank signs and painting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to approve the certificate of appropriateness. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it, four zero.
Under item 9D, you also have a certificate of appropriateness for 700 Stony Hill Road. That's for ATI Physical Therapy. They're moving into the shopping center where the Giant Supermarket is, and they harmonized unanimously recommended approval of the signs as submitted.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
The certificate of appropriateness for 700 Stony Hill Road, ATI Physical Therapy signs.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to approve this certificate of appropriateness for 700 Stony Hill Road. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying hi and raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, no? Eyes have it, four zero.
Okay, under item 9E, we have consider extension of time for Area Hospital to December 31st, 2023.
Do I hear a motion?
Chairman, I move that we extend the time for Area Hospital to December 31st, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, see, we, we need a second because actually the extension would run in our favor, so.
Second it.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. Any discussion?
Can the solicitor, Jim, explain exactly what this?
Yes. It's, people may recall that years and years ago, Area Hospital had a land development proposal, which is still active technically. They also had a zoning hearing board matter, which, in which the township proposed, and we prevailed in that, but the, the land development application is still pending. They haven't acted on it in nine years, 10 years, 11 years. But it's still active under the municipality's planning code. Once the timeframe is, to, to approve it, has, has either expires or is close to expire, we have to get an extension, and it benefits us to do that. So that's, we're actually obtaining a grant of extension from them in our benefit in this case. So otherwise, we don't want to have it deemed, deemed approved. So, yep. The same thing with the next one as well, so.
One, one note on that. They did come before us six or five years ago with a concept for a medical village.
Correct.
Yeah. That was not acted upon.
Right.
Jim, have we heard anything from them at all in the last couple of years or no?
A couple of years ago, they approached the township just informally inquiring about the interest of rezoning the property. And at that time, we had told them that if they had some more concrete proposal, that they might want to submit it. And I haven't heard since. Their attorney has reached out to them, and we actually both tried to maybe say, why don't you just withdraw the application since it most likely is not going to go through in its present form. But they wanted to keep it open just in case. But you know, we told them if you're, if you have any ideas of what you want to do with the property, obviously, as with any landowner, you're always welcome to come forward and let us know what your ideas are.
And Jim, just for the public to remind them, can you give them a roundabout idea of where this tract is, this parcel of land?
Yes, it's a part of Shady Brook Farm, although it's under separate ownership. It's the parcel of land that's right on Route 332 at the intersection of Stony Hill Road. So some people might know it as like the pumpkin patch, where you go do pumpkins. And they proposed a five-story hospital, I believe it was.
So it's directly across that, that corner from where the hotel, the Dunkin' Donuts. So it's directly across that, that corner from where the hotel, the Dunkin' Donuts, that corner right there at 332 and Stony Hill Road?
That is correct. There's forty acres available right there for development, up to about where the mulch pile is, is owned by another entity.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Those know, ayes have it, four zero. But item 10, public comment. Is there any public comment? General public comment?
Yes, we have two callers online.
Hold on, hold on, hold on a second.
Extension of time for 1273 Lindenhurst Road.
Item F, excuse me.
It's the same concept as the other one, just not near to the length of time that it's been pending.
Do I hear a motion for? Second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis for extension of 1273 Lindenhurst. Any discussion? Any public comment on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Those know, ayes have it, four zero. Now we go to public comment, I'm sorry. Who's your first caller?
We have Lisa joining us now. And Lisa's in the room with us now.
Lisa, give your full name and, and tell us if you're a Lower Mayfield resident.
Hello?
I hear you.
Okay, so is it public comment?
Yes, Lisa. Give your full name.
Oh, okay.
State if you're, state if you're a Lower Mayfield resident and give your comment.
Okay. Yeah, so this is Lisa Tenny, T-E-N-N-E-Y. I'm calling about some questions regarding a small development near my neighborhood. I live at 156 Pinnacle Circle Yardley, PA, LMT. Should I start my questions? Do you want them one at a time or in succession?
First, tell us what development, proposed development you're talking about.
Yes, so it's regarding the development. I believe the address is 1101 Big Oak Road.
Okay.
Across the street from Bain Middle School.
Okay. What, what are your questions, Lisa?
Okay, so question one is what type of work can the developer begin if they have asked for variances, those waivers and variances haven't yet been granted to do work on the property?
Well, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I'm not aware of what work they may be talking about. I do know that there was a water leak at the house that Pennsylvania American Water Company had to do some digging to find out where the shut-off valve was to do that. But essentially, they can't do any work on the land development portion of the project until they get land development approval for the project. They could demolish the house if they so choose, but they could do that with or without land development approval.
Okay, well, FYI, they did some land clearing. And my second question is that what safeguards are going to be granted for the neighborhoods? You have one, two, three, one in a different township, and three in LMT. So what, so we had a big truck on South Esther Lane today, the whole day, and part of Big Oak, Big Oak Road was lots of signs closed off. So is this something that is allowed? And if this is approved, is this going to be commonplace? Because I'm going to tell you, the neighbors are not going to like it.
Well, I'm not really sure what you're referring to, but during the course of construction, they're required to try to keep all of the work on the property or to the extent that they have to do any disturbance and park vehicles on the road, that they notify the township and/or the police department. If a road needs to be closed, that's something that would have to be coordinated with the police and emergency services.
So a follow-up on that, there was a very big truck on South Esther Lane. There are many witnesses, and there was a significant, you know, signage change on Big Oak Road. If they didn't get approval, how are you going to prevent this from happening again?
Well, we weren't aware of this. If you would have called us, we could have gone out to check and see what was going on. But we weren't aware of any closures on South Esther Lane.
So it wasn't a closure, it was a big truck that, that is quite frankly in the way of a lane, typically not parked on. So, so you're the person, Jim, we should call, or the township manager?
You can call my office or call anyone in the township, and we'll respond as soon as possible.
Okay. And by the way, the Environmental Agency, Citizens Agency was there, and they can contest to the fact that this, this did happen. Because they were there looking at the trees, which this developer has overestimated the number of damaged trees.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Our staff was out there with the Environmental Advisory Council, the arbors hired by the developer, and the developers engineer to review their report that they had submitted in support of their application and to review things. And this will all be discussed by the EAC at their next meeting and also by our planning commission when it comes before the planning commission next month.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to mention again, based on having attended that zoning meeting, there was a great concern, and I don't even know these neighbors, honestly, especially the downhill properties. So those properties on Rock Hill Creek, which includes the Bow Middle School, we believe, well, not we, I believe that that creek and the neighbors will experience significantly more flooding as a result of the removal of the trees and the granted impervious surfaces and the changes made during this development. Now, you know, you can, whatever, I believe that that creek isn't associated with a river, that it may be fed by underground tributaries, because all of our neighborhood has subpumps, and those properties that line Rock Hill Creek also have significant flooding. Now, you're gonna tax that creek, and that creek is very close to Bow Middle School, which is undergoing a, a facelift of such, a renovation. And how are you not going to compromise all those new changes to the school by allowing this?
Lisa, all of these, all of these issues that you've brought up are reviewed by our township engineer, by our various consultants and committees. And this will be all discussed at the next planning commission meeting. A lot of these issues were brought up at the planning commission meeting. It wasn't a zoning meeting. It was a prior planning commission meeting that the applicant had gone to. And if any would like to see the current set of plans, they are available on our website, on the planning commission webpage. There are links to all of the reports and the plans that are current for this application. So at the next meeting, this stuff will all be reviewed, and you'll have an opportunity to speak at that meeting before it then comes back to our board of supervisors at a later date.
Okay, just one more question. Has there been any change from what's posted outside that neighborhood to now?
I believe the plan, I believe the plans are essentially the same. I haven't looked at them in great detail, but if you're looking for the most current set of plans, they're available online. You could also come in our office and take a look at them if you so wish.
Okay, well, then I won't bother. And also, I, I had requested, oh, probably about four years ago, a deer crossing sign to go across Big Oak Road. Of course, we've had casualties. What is the status of that? I think when Chair McCartney was there, he made mention that there was one going to be placed on Big Oak Road, and where are we with that?
I don't remember that, that I said there was going to be a deer crossing sign placed on Big Oak Road. Does anybody have any recollection of that?
There was some discussion.
There was discussion around it.
Shot down, yeah. It wasn't appropriate area to put a deer sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I do think I heard that there was one. It wasn't going to be, quote, "where I had proposed," but there would be one. So now there's not one, when you said it on TV.
I was referring to where she actually proposed the sign to be. She's correct that we did take a look at where we could put a sign, but that hasn't been accomplished yet. We're not sure yet.
As soon as we find out the fin of it, Lisa, we'll let you know, as well as the rest of the council.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Any other public comment?
Yes, David is joining us now. And David is in the room with us now.
Hey, David, give your full name. Tell us if you're a Lower Mayfield resident.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Richel. I'm a Lower Mayfield resident. I live at 220 Meadow Drive. Can you hear me?
Sure, loud and clear.
Great. Apologies for not being there earlier. I had a question concerning items seven, A, B, and C in the engineer's report, the Maple Vale Drainage Project. I was in at the end of, just before Christmas, had submitted some written questions to the township, and we still haven't received any responses to that. And just as an update to you folks, since we were, I and some of the other residents were in last, nothing has happened at that site. And last Friday, somebody from the contractor came with a truck and removed the excavator, and I spoke with the gentleman. He said that he wasn't sure that they were going to finish this project this year and just wondered if we could get an update of what was going on. And, and also a specific question you may or may not be able to answer concerning possible complaint or even legal action concerning where the new pipe was put in at the end of Maple Vale along Taylorsville. I think that there was a resident that was quite concerned about how that was done. So those are my questions. Thank you.
So the contractor has relocated the piece of equipment that was parked within the right of way of Taylorsville Road as that be, as that contributed to a site distance issue of vehicles pulling out of Maple Vale Drive at that intersection. So that was relocated. As for the status of the project, again, we're waiting on PennDOT to approve the highway occupancy permit so that we can complete the work within that area. And we expect that, that within a couple of weeks for PennDOT to approve that. And then as far as the complaint, I, I believe that I've had discussions with the, the property owner right on the corner as to where that work is, is being completed, and I've answered all of their concerns over the phone. I'm happy to discuss it with them. If they have any other questions, they have my phone number. And as far as Mr. Richel's initial inquiries, we responded to that, I believe, before the end of the year in an email in writing. So if he did not receive that, then I will forward that to him. Again, I have his email address, and I can forward that to him.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, because we, I haven't received any email updates. So thank you for that. I appreciate getting that back. The, just as a point of clarification, when we were in in December, I think it was indicated that they would move the excavator almost immediately. And as I said, that wasn't done until last Friday. And they didn't move it, they removed it. They put it on a truck and they took it away. So it just kind of raises further questions among everybody here of what's going on. And I think the big concern is that if something doesn't happen soon, it'd be better just to remove all the building materials from the street before they freeze for the winter.
Yeah, so they, they still have material on the streets. They still have some equipment out there. And, and so I'm not concerned with them just picking up and leaving and, and not finishing the project. But again, the ball is in PennDOT's court. Once we get the permit, the contractors indicated that they have all the materials to proceed, and they're anticipating completing the work within a matter of days, once we get approval from PennDOT.
Okay, thank you. And I look forward to receiving your email.
And yeah, I just want to follow up to make sure I'm following, because I remember when they brought the, to our attention, the location of that big piece of equipment. And I know you were, you were directly in contact with the contractor. And I thought it was moved quickly, maybe, maybe not moved enough, or it certainly has been moved again, but can you help?
Yes, that's correct. They, they did move, they did move it from one location and then attempted to basically hide it behind the, the existing tree that was out there. And then once it was brought to our attention, that, that's still, is, there's, there was still a site distance issue. I went out there, I checked it myself. I contacted the contractor that afternoon after I saw it. And they indicated that, I believe that was last Thursday, and they moved it on Friday.
Okay, because I know you and I had some correspondence about it, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add in, if they did move it the initial time, it was literally only moved inches. It didn't appear that it moved at all.
No, I, I hear you, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention, so.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
No more public comment online.
Thank you. Good item 11, supervisor report. Park and Rec Board met last week, talked about a number of things, including the open space proposed ordinance. Park and Rec has no objections to that, but I know the planning commission, which also met, still has some issues with minimum lot size and that kind of stuff that we're going to tighten up and send it back to the planning commission. Supervisor Blondie?
Yeah, so the ADHOP committee had two meetings in January. And I, and I would really urge everybody to go on FaceTube or FaceTube, YouTube, wherever, and, and, and watch or read the minutes of, of the work that they've been doing. You know, this is something that we're, we're all, we've all been talking about for a long time. And I have to tell you that I think it's going to be a big project. You know, I don't, I don't know where we're going to land yet. I don't think anyone knows where we're going to land yet. But one of the contractors or proposed bidders that we had in to help us come up with an ultimate site plan and use of those properties, Ed Patterson, told a story about a farm, a barn, that they helped salvage, rebuild, however you want to express it, in New Jersey for a local government in New Jersey. And that barn alone cost over a million dollars. So, you know, this is, this is a thoughtful group of people, fellow residents who are working, who are leveraging expertise, and, and good work is coming out of it. But it's really, we're going to have the best outcome if people are following along and really, you know, thinking about what, what next steps look like. So that's my little song on that. Also, the Board of Auditors met. They have the most recent audit as of now, and that's my update.
Sure. So in the interim, three of my commissions have met. The Historical Commission met last week. There is an opening for the Historical Commission if you're interested. There was some discussion about working with the Ad Hoc Property Committee in terms of providing help in some of the province, some of the historical components of stuff that's Patterson Farm. Disability Advisory Board met to review some of the issues in terms of, they didn't have anything with any of the, really any of the upcoming plans in terms of development in the area. They were okay with stuff. The Farmland Preservation met this week and issued its new hunting policy. As many folks know, we have a process where we allow hunters to hunt bow on farmland preservation property. It's part of our deer mitigation strategy. We also work with a group called BOMA, Big Oak Whitetail Management Association. And it's part of a larger approach to reduce the population of deer, which, if you read the traffic accident reports, is a significant driver of incidents, particularly in the northern part of the township. So this new policy is, in keeping with game commission rules for red tag, allows them to hunt a more extended period of the time. We also will be tracking who the hunters are so that we know if there's ever a problem with any of the blinds or anything like that, that we can follow up with them. But that's working as expected on that one. So happy to rejoin Farmland Preservation and find a group of folks. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Supervisor Lewis. Supervisor McCarthy?
I have nothing to report this time.
Go to item 12, Other Business. First on the agenda is to consider the acceptance of the final trust agreement. We already picked PNC as our trustee for our sewer proceeds trust. We've all had a chance to peruse the trust documents. And at this time, I'll accept the motion to approve the final, or accept the final trust agreement.
So moved.
I will second with questions.
Next phase. Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor McCartney. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, so the question is, does that document lock us in for a principal deposit? Okay.
Initial deposit. We can put as much in as we want, whatever we want.
But I'm saying, does that, does the document then tie us to what's in?
They're going to have to put in at least $10 million. That ties it.
But it does, the acceptance of this final trust agreement says that our intent is to initially put in $10 million when we say we're accepting the final trust agreement.
Well, once it's signed, we should be giving it checked. We also have to, you know, the other part of that is we have to develop our investment strategy. Right now, but I would assume, since we don't have an investment strategy, which, you know, we will be dealing with sorely, is that the money will go into that money market fund at 4%, 4 and 1/4%.
If I could just, first of all, the agreement says under Article 3, Section 3.1, initial contribution, the township shall transfer $10 million in cash to the trust on or as soon as practicable after the effective date. And the effective date, now it has 2022 here, it means, I guess, the date that this, it doesn't really define entirely. But so there is some.
Yeah, my question was the.
$10 million is the amount to specify.
Okay.
It's called the initial contribution. Yep. Obviously, there's, there are other contributions can be made subsequently, but the initial contribution is set in here. And just for the record, I mean, this obviously is a very well drafted agreement, but where this is not something that our office did. So I'm just commenting as an observer of that. So that's, that's my understanding.
Does consider acceptance of the final trust agreement allow the signing of the trust agreement? Who would have to sign that trust agreement? Would it be all members of the board? Would it be the chair? Would it be two members of the board? It's set up for a single signature.
Yes, it's usually by the chair. It's by name and title, and then the trust, so it would be, I mean, it would be, obviously, they'd have to refer it.
So acceptance of the final trust agreement at this board meeting tonight would allow the chair to sign the trust agreement and for the initial deposit of $10 million.
Correct.
And the question is, is the $10 million the number to be named?
Well, I mean, that's a question certainly. And the rest of the acceptance, if there's nothing else you have questions about. But the way this is structured now, it would require the additional deposit of $10 million. Again, it allows for subsequent contributions. That's something you can determine in order, there's other terms about. About the corpus based in these shares.
Okay. Oh, sorry. We couldn't, they couldn't use.
All right.
The, I did review this, but again, I haven't spoken to Ms. Marky, who drafted it. But it's my interpretation, at least based upon that section I just reviewed, the initial contribution, which would be essentially setting up the corpus of the trust, would be $10 million. Again, that's the minimum amount established now. Subsequent contributions, depending on a lot of factors going down in the future, other contributions can be made as well at some point. Deposits, for lack of a better term.
Right. The way that the agreement was drafted, and again, not commenting as an attorney, but just one of the board members that was involved, was that we would create it so that we could fund it with an amount certain. And then as certain issues become clearer in the township, we would have, we would have the ability, this board and future boards, to add more money to the trust.
Okay. Any other comment?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First, I made some minor edits. I know one of them is probably contentious around the initial deposit amount. I'll explain that in a moment. But any of the other ones, which were not significant, were they accepted into the agreement?
PNC, I spoke with our attorney. PNC has no objection if that's, you know, added. So if the board so agrees, I mean, as far as, other than the amount of money where the initial deposit, either, you know, PNC has no objection. So if the board wants to incorporate that into the trust agreement, we will.
I think what John's talking about is he noticed, like, you know, some typos that he wanted corrected.
Well, and among a responsibility question for PNC, in the event that we need help with an investigation related to issues with the fund, there are certain things they carved out that they weren't going to be participant of. But if it's something related to malfeasance or an issue, they have, should participate and help us in that, which is why, you know, I edited that, of course. So my, given some, some of the discussions that we've had previously, my one edit about the larger initial deposit is, is a challenge. And to that end, am I allowed to make mention, it's a public? Yeah. Yeah. So we're addressing some contingent liabilities related to this transaction that haven't fully been analyzed. Would that be a fair way to say it?
Oh, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that would be accurate, yes.
Yeah. And so my only concern with that is, with that concern, I'm willing to remove my edit on that for now. But my suggestion would be that we get better certainty as to what the amount truly could be with a model around that. But I have a feeling, you know, I'd just be happy to at least get, you know, PNC to help us in the event of a criminal investigation. But so, and again, my intent or desire would be to want to vote for this. I just wanted a little more certainty around it. And to that end, it's, I know this is, I can appreciate Supervisor McCartney, who has passion about trying to get this across the finish line. I guess my, my hope is that we could have a better understanding of truly what the residual amounts are and what our potential contingent liabilities are. And I don't think we really know that yet, without getting to too much detail around that.
Well, I agree.
Okay.
There's a lot of issues that are still up in the air that need discussion. Patterson Farm, Play For All, Ackles Field, we have, we have a lot of things, we have, and a lot of money other than sewer funds, that would probably take care of much of the issues that, as far as the contingent liabilities of the sewer system, that are still outstanding. But I understand exactly what you're saying. I would prefer to leave as much money liquid as possible so that if this board or a future board has to make a decision, they have options. That's, that's the only reason why I want to start with 10.
Right.
I would be, I would love to start with 20. But, but, you know, there's just too many open questions that make it uncomfortable for me to go past the 10 at this point.
But.
I agree with you.
Respectfully, and part of my earlier strategy was to say, have more flexibility around borrowing, right? So that you could have a larger amount. The consensus of the board was no, no, borrowing only a last resort situation, which I get. That's part of the reason why I was like, well, if you allow easier borrowing to give you some flexibility here, I would just, gosh, based on what we don't know, it wouldn't kill us to find out. Like, for example, if we learn that a month from now, we think it's $9 million or thinks $12 million, right? At least that gives us time to work through and feel comfortable about that and get folks to vote on it. So, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, I'm, assuming the minor changes I had were taken and assuming we have a good sense that that amount of money is legitimately savable, I wouldn't have a problem voting for it, even if, you know, I mean, in general, I'm in favor of the concept. And so that's why I've advanced ideas to help make it flexible. I just would prefer that we have a better understanding, right, of what our contingent liabilities are.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to provide some context on this, and again, obviously, I'm just starting and trying to get an understanding as to what may have been obligated, what may have been discussed relative to these sale proceeds. So Allison has prepared sort of a cash accounting, an unaudited cash accounting of the sale proceeds. At this point, through 2023, through the conclusion of this year, factoring in sort of the interfund transfers that were contemplated to the Park and Rec Capital Reserve Fund, she was showing, you know, roughly, a little bit shy of $23 million. Now, there are some other miscellaneous things as we're going through this that we're finding. For example, I think this board had allocated upwards of $300,000 for Patterson Farm and some of the remediation efforts at Patterson Farm that's not noted on her accounting. There are, as you mentioned, some contingent liabilities, some closeout items relative to the sanitary sewer system. We talked, we talked a little bit about those. So there's, you know, there's a, there's a fair amount of money that's still available after the initial payments that were made in terms of paying off the debt that was, you know, decided in terms of utilization of these proceeds. So I, you know, again, can I say absolutely, sitting here, you know, a week and a half, that we don't have contingent liabilities in excess of 13 million? I would imagine that we don't, right? I think there's probably not that degree of loose ends that exist. But, 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 so, you know, as I communicated earlier, you know, to the extent that the board's comfortable with the initial contribution amount of 10 million, we still have, you know, a fair amount of financial flexibility as it relates to those contingent liabilities. And we can start, you know, generating, you know, much more meaningful return than, than obviously what we're getting in its current state, which is sitting in a checking account.
We do have MMA, MMIA.
Right. And I, I think that, you know, Dr. Weiss had noted, there is, I think, some escrowed funds or set aside funds at least. Now, some of that has been sort of co-mingled just from a sort of a cash sweep standpoint in a, in a single bank account. But there are, there are monies that have already been set aside, if you will, or allocated within that balance to cover that that would not necessarily have to come out of the, the sale proceeds, as we understand it right now.
And we still have well over $3 million in the bond fund. That was pretty hardly pump station that we don't have to, we're not obligated anymore. We have well over $1 million from Bucks County Sewer that we don't have to pay. So that'll help pay any, you know, all that. And we have sewer fund money, not sewer proceeds money, sewer fund money that will help with any of these contingent liabilities in case they are extensive. But we have the fact that we have, you know, we have the wherewithal to deal with it when the time comes. And I would like certainty as well. You know, this hit me today, just like you did.
Yeah, there's a couple.
So, so, you know, the, I'm all for, I'm all for, you know, not obligating that extra money until we know what's going on. And so, you know, that's why I think the board already pretty much agreed to start with $10 million, knowing full well that in the near future, that's going to go up. You know, we all, we all want to see a healthy balance to help the general fund from year to year. That's, as far as, as far as the other language in the trust that you like to see, do you want to make a motion to add those and just review those additions to the board so that?
I mean, yeah, they were minor in scope. I mean, if that's.
No, I mean, that's, that's what we're doing today.
Let me see if I can pull it up.
I could tell you the PNC will not object to your, to those if, if the board agrees to those changes.
And while he's doing that, while my initial conversations were with the 10 million and I was fine with it, I had a conversation with the former township manager, Mr. Ferguson. And one of the ideas that he had floated was, I believe, the payoff for the golf debt was roughly 14 million. So to take that 14 million and to make that the initial corpus, kind of to memorialize the debt that we were taking from the golf course and putting it into an interest-bearing account would have been more of a symbolic gesture to say, hey, paid off this debt, but we're taking that debt, we're rolling it directly into an income-producing account, and that's going to be the corpus of this. So that's why I changed a little bit from the original. I'm still good with the 10 million. I think it's a great start, but that was the, the thought process behind the 14 for me.
And I, yeah, I mean, you know, it's whatever the board decides. The, the board has already made it that the golf course is going to pay us back over time. First, the general fund, and then the debt. So that's a year after year thing until it's paid. However, you know, if you want to take $4 million off the top, just to symbolically state that the 14 million in there is, is.
It's moving it from one side of the, you know, the accounting to the other, essentially.
It's not changing the money. It's not changing the equation. It's just, you know, I don't think the extra $4 million is going to change anything other than might, it may limit our short-term options.
I think that, yeah, that's, again, weighing in, not being.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we'll get, we'll get some, with the, with the master plan development of Patterson Farm, with, with the clarification of our liabilities with the sewer system and the permitting process. That's which, we're talking a few months. We could easily, you know, change that corpus shortly.
And again, with, with, at least, you know, in the short term or the current interest rate environment, you know, as we talked about with, with transferring some of these additional proceeds to the money market account in which we'll maintain the liquidity of this money, but generate additional return. You know, again, depending on what the risk tolerance is as you're going through and looking at sort of your investment policy statement, you, you may generate close to sufficient return using, using that money market account as opposed to putting it in, into the trust and exposing it to, you know, other market risks. So.
There's nothing stopping us to direct the manager to take the entire. There's nothing stopping us to direct the manager to take the entire, you know, after the initial deposit, take the rest of the sewer proceed.
Correct.
Place it in the PNC high-yield money market.
And generate, generate additional, yeah, and generate additional yield that.
Not part of a corpus which can be.
Correct.
Still remains liquid.
Correct. Exactly.
And John, while you're looking for that, James, I don't, didn't mean to interrupt if you weren't done. Sorry.
I, I mean, I found the agreement. Unfortunately, I have to get it to my.
So I, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think the board has done really good work on this, right? We, we all come from slightly different vantage points. But we've all made a commitment to try to ensure that these proceeds benefit the township for, you know, the foreseeable future, if not, not forever. And, and each of us, each of you, maybe not me, but each of you has definitely made this process stronger and better for the township. And I really have been impressed despite our, you know, disagreements or where we come from to, you know, the work that you guys have done. I too hope that soon we'll be making additional deposits to the corpus of the trust. But I'm just going to keep talking about Patterson Farm tonight, right? If we really want to wrestle that to the ground, if we, meaning we want to shore up those buildings and come up with a long-term strategy, it's not going to be done at cost of a dollar. And I would hate to lock the money here and then have that other work come out. And then we're, we have a great plan, but no way to fund it. So, you know, my hope is that as the plan becomes clearer, more opportunities for grants or support from state or whatever come, come out. But until that happens, I, I want to make sure that we're able to fulfill what I think is a promise that, that we're going to not kick that down the, the lane, but really try to deal with that. And then some of the other projects as well. So that's what makes me hesitant to say, let's put more than 10 right now. But I'm confident that by the end of the year, and, and maybe much sooner than that, we will be putting more than 10 into the corpus, an additional money into the corpus.
If you'd like, I can go through the edits that I have if you want.
Please do.
Yeah. They're minor.
Important enough issue that you do this publicly with the, the fact the trust agreement is on the agenda for approval. Yes.
Right. So I'm looking at the 1230 version that I edited on January 6th. The effective date obviously would have to be, if, if were to be passed, and I think it'd be January of 2023, which would be in the title page one. And that also gets picked up on page two when the effective date means 2023. Minor text thing on section 2.6. All, all of this obviously is in revision mode. Basically removing a comma between above and and. And then board members, section 2.8, to replace the final line, it's, that currently reads, for purposes of determining the identities of board members from time to time, the trustee may conclusively rely on written incumbency certificate signed by the secretary of the board. And, and it's really properly the certificate of election from the Bucks County Board of Elections, which we all have. Section 3.1, I had a, an initial edit to make it 17.5. But that I, I'm willing to, 17.5 million to, to remove for discussion today, given where we're at. Section 3.3, acceptance by trustee here, an extra comma gets removed. The other thing I had in 4.1 was increasing the distribution threshold to 15 million. Again, my goal was to try and make it more aggressive, but that would have to be removed.
You mean your, your change.
Yeah, that change. Yeah. And then, section 5.1, loans to the township, which was, no such loan should be made if the loan would cause the fair market value and trust access to be less than the sum of the distribution threshold, right, is what I said, as opposed to initial contribution and all contributions. So that was a fix to basically make it 15 million when you can withdraw. But again, given that we don't have any comfort around that. The other thing too is, on the 6.1, this is a four-year agreement with the trustee. Typically, these could be like three years before auto renewal. And I removed that from four to third. That's in section dot 6.1. I, this one, again, and, and just for those 6.3, this would be page eight, section eight, or VII. I added the following line in there because, based on recent experience, the trustee shall be required to assist in any investigation into the facts involving a violation of law. But, and this is the carve-out that they, they want basically everything, shall not be bound to make any investigation into the facts from matters stated in any resolution, certificate, statement, instrument, opinion, report, notice, request, consent, entitlement, order, approval, or other paper document. So essentially, I'm just asking for them to be helpful in the event of a violation of law, because it's not clearly stated. And then, let's see where else do I have? And I'm going through. Notification, I just made sure that it went both to the township manager and the chair, kind of similar to the way the trustees work on the other, just in the off chance, as we recently had, where we, we had somebody who was interim. And.
Yeah, all the trustees right now are ex-fiscio, you know, the board members and the township manager.
Yeah. That's all I had. And again, most of it was mine or my policy differences, obviously want to protect a lot more and give flexibility. You know.
That last suggested changes on 10.3, is that correct? That's all right. No, I don't want to, I don't want to.
Then.
Yeah, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, there. Yep.
Okay. Yep.
Yep.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
If, for process purposes, I, I, I forget who made the motion. Supervisor Barney?
I didn't. I second.
Okay.
Suzanne made the motion.
I want to make sure you, you accept those amendments proposed by.
Yes.
If this passes, you can call Overmeyer and tell him to make those changes. They, they know the changes.
I, I guess the, the one, the one question, Supervisor Lewis, in, in terms of section 2.8. So the, the board members, as I understood it, were this body, correct? And was there anyone else in the township manager? So the, the certificate that you're referencing in terms of the board of elections would not, you know, obviously, I would not be in a, in a position to produce that. So I, I think, again, the incumbency certificate signed by the secretary of the board may be the proper instrument in order to establish versus, versus the, the reference to the, the certificate from the election board. So I, I just, I don't know if that's.
No, you're right. I mean, especially Dave, you know, when I first came on the board, I was, I was appointed or elected by the other members. I wouldn't have been able to produce that document, which could happen again. And PS, I don't know if I can produce my document now, even though I'm duly elected. So if, if John could.
I would be okay with excising that. I don't, my initial thought was, oh, wait, how do we make sure that the people are, you know, there's like a standard for that? So this is, this would be a document signed by the secretary of the board of supervisors, indicating that you are, in fact, our township manager and all of us who are members of the board supervisors are.
Correct. I mean, the solicitor could note, I mean, it typically would be used even in debt proceeding, proceedings as well. You would, you would.
It occurs, the bond deals.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a very common. It's a very, it's okay. It's a very common document.
Deal, I'm, I'm sure that they're not very flexible.
So that, that would be the other change in not, not to include Supervisor Lewis's added 2.8, and everything else would be the same.
Dave, close to the mic.
I'm sorry. So except for that change to 2.8, which now will not be changed, everything else would be the same in terms of Supervisor Lewis's proposed edits, as he explained just a few minutes ago. And that will be your amended motion. I assume Supervisor McCartney would accept that as a second.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure the ministers are as clear as possible.
We have an amended motion to accept the trust agreement as amended. Any other discussion? Any public comment?
Yes, we have one caller on the line. Bill's joining us now. Bill, can you hear us?
Hello, my name is Bill Gabota. I'm at 1230 Ash Lane in the township. I assume you can hear me.
Yep. Loud and clear.
Okay, loud and clear. First question, where can I see the text of this final trust agreement, which sounds very interesting indeed?
After it's finalized, I would assume it would be posted on the, the, it could be posted on the website. There's no reason why it couldn't be.
Is that the plan?
Yeah. Yes, I, I, I think that's, that this board and the township has been very transparent about things like that. I think it would be something that would be reflected on the website. Yeah.
No, that sounds good. And one other comment I have to make is that I've heard some discussion about further deposits into the, this trust. I want you to know that I back that 100%. We should put as much as we can into it for, you know, various, you know, like infrastructure improvements and those inevitable rainy days.
Exactly.
The thing is, once it goes in, it's very hard to take it out.
Actually, I think that's a very good idea.
Yeah, which I agree with you, but then it wouldn't be for rainy days per se, because it'd be in the trust.
Well, yeah, I understand that. That, that, that would be all right. Maybe you could put me down as having misspoken.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, that's what I have. And thank you very much for your time. Good night.
Good night.
A little chance, I live next to Mr. McCartney. What are those contingent liabilities after dealing with this sewer sale issue before, during, and after, including the PUC process? I don't recall any content, any liabilities pushed to LMT by Aqua in this agreement. So that's a bit disconcerting.
Yeah, I mean, again, as a new guy, I'm still, you know, trying to, trying to, you know, figure, figure those out to a certain extent. I mean, most of these contingent liabilities are, are relatively small. But so, some of it relates to, so a condition of, 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 of the sale would, would be to transfer permits from Lower Mayfield Township Authority or Lower Mayfield Township to, to Aqua, Pennsylvania. And so as, as part of that process, the township had to engage in a, in a special study under Act 537, which is, which is a state statute. And so the Department of Environmental Protection is reviewing that, that special study that was done. And, and they've raised some, some questions concerning some potential sanitary sewer extensions in the future and those kinds of things. Again, they, they, they may or may not materialize. But I think the board is just, you know, trying to make sure that there is, you know, sufficient funds on hand in order to meet those contingent liabilities in the event that they do materialize. So they're, they're, they're not, I'm, I'm not trying to be vague or, or elusive. They're just not completely clear at this point. And some of that may be due to the fact that I've been here for a week and a half. But some of it may just be due to the interactions with the Department of Environmental Protection at this point. So.
So does any of this have to do, weren't we under a consent decree for something or another?
Right. So that, so some of it has to do with the, the corrective action plan that, that was initially submitted in, in terms of who's sort of advancing those obligations that were committed to in the corrective action plan. And so, again, this, this may or may not be an issue at all. But I think we're, the township's just trying to be conservative in terms of making sure that those can be quantified. There can be definitive determinations on these issues. And then, and then at that point, as has been indicated by all members, that ideally there would be additional contributions into, into the trust.
Okay. I, I guess I am just a bit concerned. I, as a citizen, I would have thought, of course, we didn't ever get the contract and neither did Board of Supervisors on, I think you've got 24 hours to read it, maybe less. But the, the notion that all liabilities wouldn't be taken by the buyer, particularly a consent decree that they knew darn well what it was about. They were supposed to figure out what the liability was in terms of the inflow and infiltration, and then take that on. So I'm, I'm concerned that we sold this thing and we still haven't put a bow on it.
Or wait. I, I think, again, to answer your question, and I, I was probably echoing what Mr. Kratzler said, a lot of this is, is information which was obtained, at least more recently, and it's not, and I'll rely on others, it, it, it doesn't rise to the level of, of, the level of magnitude anyway, where the, the balance would be threatened, so to speak, as, as far as we can tell. Understand that your concerns, and it's one of the things obviously that collectively we're going to be looking at.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? And then I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving the trust, signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Those know, I have it, 4-0. Next will be appointing a delegate and an alternate delegate or delegates to the annual PSATs convention in Hershey, April 23rd to April 26th. Do I hear a motion to appoint a delegate?
Who wants to go? I had a lovely time. You two can have a lovely time if you would like to go.
Sounds like I.
The experience of a lifetime.
I mean, based on that feedback, I'd like to nominate Suzanne to go back since she had such a lovely time.
You know what? I would actually do it, but alas, I will be away.
Oh, okay. Well, seeing as I'm the only supervisor that hasn't gone.
No, no.
I will nominate myself.
No, no, the man next to you also, so.
There you go.
So I nominate you.
I'll second it.
Yeah. We have a nomination.
Wait a second, hold on a sec. Before I can accept that, I do have to check my calendar, because I'm looking at those dates. And I'd hate to commit to going and to not be able to go. So.
Having a haircut's no, they're good.
No, I know. I am actually out of town that weekend.
A little bit. Let me see. What do you got?
And I'm not going with him.
I'll make a motion to appoint as delegate then, Supervisor Lewis.
And I also think Dan hasn't had a chance to go, so we can make Dan the alternate in case John is busy.
Or John has other plans.
We can make, we can, since Dan isn't here to, to, to give us an excuse, we can make Dan the alternate. It's, it's going to be tough being hauled up at the Hotel Hershey, having a chocolate massage.
I'm going to second Suzanne's motion then, if John's okay with it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, print, yeah, plenty of free pens, coffee mugs, those big shopping bags.
Would it be appropriate to send chief one of these years or?
Can't afford it.
What about Dave?
No, it's all paper route at Houser. That's why we're voting. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a free five days.
They always get you.
Any, any public comment? Here, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye. Eyes have it, 3-1. Should we appoint an alternate?
If Dan has interest in going, I'm sure, or if anybody, I'm sure we'd be happy to send them.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
Supervisor Lewis says he doesn't know what his schedule's going to be a week before, so I would nominate Supervisor Granier as the alternate.
Second.
That's okay. He can always say. I was, there was one time I was an alternate and I couldn't make it. So, you know, we, you, you just give it more, enough time and reservations, we cancel. You're doing great. We love you.
So we need to say.
Any public comment?
I don't know if we got a second for my motion.
Second.
Oh, you did. Oh, no, no, she's, she's seconding. Okay.
We got, we got a motion and a second to appoint Supervisor Lewis as the delegate. Supervisor Granier as the alternate delegate. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll post to this one too. We'll post this one too, he's not here to defend himself.
Motion passes three one.
And. I'd like to make a motion to designate David W. Kratzler Junior as the Township Right to Know Officer.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to make, uh, David Kratzler, our Township Manager, the Right to Know Officer for the Township. Any comments, public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
No, eyes have it four zero. Item thirteen.
Somebody else.
Look at the only, the only one smiling is Chief.
Appointments to boards and commissions, do we have any appointments, uh, nominations for?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kevin P. Treber um, to, uh, the Citizens Traffic Commission.
Second.
There's a motion made, seconded, to have, um, Kevin Treber as a member of C T C. Any discussion, public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero, congratulations, Mr. Treber. Any other business before the board? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.